All right. We're here to start our work session. Do I need to call roll again, Laura?
If we could, that way I can make sure I do have everyone. It looks like I do.
Okay. Laura, if you wouldn't mind, please, call the roll.
Okay, Garcia.
Here.
Yep, Hart.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you, it's always a good sound check, too.
It is an excellent one, good point. All right, so this work session, we just have one item noticed on our agenda, and that is the discussion of New Vista. As you all know from the last board meeting, New Vista is one of our last bond projects, and it has the original amount of money plus inflation that was allocated to it when we passed the bond, what seems like a century ago. So I think that we're, and also I just wanted to introduce for those of you who don't know, Principal Quitter. When I toured New Vista, I had the opportunity to meet you before, but thank you for joining us.
It's a real pleasure to be here.
This call is now being recorded.
All right, so who wants to kick this off?
Thank you, Board President, Marquess, board members. Rob Price will be doing the majority of the presenting, but I wanted to just walk the board through our first slide, just to articulate kind of what this evening is about and how we're moving forward. So Rob, if you could forward that for me, or Randy, or whoever's working the slide deck. So here's what's going to be contained within today's work session, board members. Number one, I think that we will walk both the board and the public, those watching, through the challenges of our current facility, and we'll go through facility conditions and some programmatic conditions, and Rob and his team will be able to do that. I want the board to know and understand what the original scope of work in the bond was, and what that will and will not fix. And I think ultimately, the goal of today is to figure out a path forward on how we proceed with this project, understanding that there's really kind of three ways we could go through with this. We're going to have a recommendation in the process that we use, but maintaining the current scope, looking into ways to expand the scope, or making the determination whether or not that we need to delay this project potentially further, and looking forward to potentially a new facility for New Vista. And so I think that those are paths forward that we can talk about and consider. And so with that, I will turn the presentation back over to our Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services, Rob Price.
Dr. Anderson, thank you. Good evening, Board President, Marquess, members of the board. Before I get started, just want to do some quick introductions of those that will be joining me tonight. As you already introduced, Principal Kirk Quitter from New Vista High School, Scott Stevens, our Executive Director of Bond Planning, Glenn Segrew, our Senior Planner, and then if we have any questions, Dr. Sam Messier, who is the Area Superintendent for the Northwest Network. So just a recap of where we've been, and give you a little history on the facility. Again, New Vista was a Phase One project, meaning New Vista was supposed to start design immediately after the bond was passed in 2014. So design would have happened in 2015, we would have been under construction in 2016. As some of you know, we put the project on hold in 2016 to explore and investigate a partnership or real estate transaction with the University of Colorado. At that time, we were talking about potentially selling University Hill, taking those proceeds, rebuilding University Hill and New Vista on the New Vista site. As you know, the board or the community did not support that direction, so we did not move forward with that. In the meantime, we've invested in the University Hill facility, and now we're having this discussion around New Vista. The original budget started at 9.4 million. As Tina said, our current budget is 13.3 million. We've adjusted that by 3.8 with inflation, $800,000 for innovation, and then some IT funds to address audio enhancement throughout the school. Original construction, the original building was built in 1952 as baseline junior high, so the building is 68 years old. We've had nine additions onto the building. It currently sits about 78,000 square feet. I'll show you the property here in a second. We're about 13 acres. Current enrollment is holding steady at 328, that was 2019 enrollment numbers, and we currently have 35 staff members. Just a little bit about the facility condition. The facility itself sits at the southwest corner of 20th Street and Baseline. As I talked about earlier, we've had nine additions. This shows you where those additions have been placed. The long spine of the building was originally constructed in 1952, along with the gymnasium, if you've driven by it, it's got a large barrel roof over that. 13-acre site, I would say it's an underutilized site to the east over here where you see some athletic fields as it sits currently. So in December of 2018, we retained RD3 through an RP process to conduct a life cycle cost analysis, to project the initial and ongoing costs of ownership associated with New Vista High School. And then we also hired them to conduct a facility condition assessment, to identify and to get a better understanding of the deficiencies, and to help us make long-term capital planning needs or decisions around this facility. So when they're going through an assessment, I want to talk about that a little bit. This is a visual assessment. Don't do any destructive simulation, you're not tearing in the walls, you're not tearing up pavement to make subgrade decisions. This is truly a visual inspection. As we're walking through, we're looking at the light, boilers, mechanical systems, roofs, et cetera. But I do want to make sure that as we're talking about some of the structural deficiencies that we're having, we won't know exactly what that means until we hire an engineer to do a full design, and then toss that out to understand what the cost impacts. It's going to be extremely important when I'm talking about the facility condition index here later on in the presentation. So what they did see as they were walking the building is we've got some structural issues, as you can see down there, the 300 level classrooms, classrooms 312, 316, 320, I'll show you some photos of that, some water infiltration in the auditorium, and then you'll see some structural issues on the east side of the building that we'll show you in some photos here coming up. This building has four different levels, so if we're thinking about the 100, 200, 300 levels, and then we have some platforms to get down the elevators, et cetera. From an ADA perspective, we are challenged in this facility with the different stairwells, reduced width corridors, et cetera. So some of the existing conditions, what you can see in the top left-hand corner and the bottom right, or bottom left-hand corner, you'll see some cracking in the brick veneer. These are both interior photos. What we're seeing is settling of floor slabs, structural foundations. You'll see in the bottom right-hand corner, that was in the 300 classrooms, where we're starting to see some floor slabs, floor slabs settling, and that is due to that water infiltration coming in along the west side of the building. Back in the 2006 bond, we attempted to address that with some underdrained piping, et cetera, and it appears that it is not working for us. In the top right-hand corner, you will see, this is just an exterior render, or exterior photo of the southeast corner of the building, gives you an idea of what that looks like, the barrel roof, the original 1952 building, and then asphalt paving that is beyond its useful life, et cetera. Again, existing conditions, right now, the superstructure is showing signs of its age with the structural cracking that you're seeing. Structural foundations and superstructures usually last 100-plus years, but due to the extent of the structural cracking we're seeing in this building, we are considering it beyond its useful life in six to 10 years. And I think that's important to note, and we'll talk about that here shortly. Exterior walls and retaining walls, as you're seeing here, showing signs of failure. As the age of the original brick is also 68 years old, brick is usually dropped out at about seven to five years. When RD3 did their assessment, they were telling us that in lieu of repairing the brick veneer, they would recommend a replacement of it. Again, this is showing you that middle photo is a structural cast-in-place column. We're starting to see some cracking here. The challenge with this is really trying to come up with an estimate of what this will take to repair or replace. So again, I've talked about before, having to hire a professional engineer as we would be starting the design process to really do an analysis of what this means, has not been done at this point. So when we're talking about costs, cost to fix some of the structural issues is not included in the life cycle cost analysis that we'll be talking about. The majority of the building, as you've seen in one of the photos below, has single-pane windows. All of those are beyond its useful life. The roofing system, the electrical system, the plumbing system, the mechanical system, were all noted by RD3 to be beyond their useful life. So one of the challenges we have in these existing facilities, and you're seeing in some of these constraints with hazardous materials, low ceiling height, different floor levels, et cetera. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Stevens. Scott's been working with Kirk, Dr. Sam Messier, and his staff out there to talk about the educational inadequacies we have in the building. So Scott, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to be here with me tonight. In late 2019, we performed an educational effectiveness assessment, and we looked at 10 areas of the building, and in this slide, you'll see on the left-hand side, those 10 bullet points. And out of those 10 areas, we identified that eight of them were inadequate. These look at the adequacy of several areas, including safety, furniture, aesthetics, acoustics, et cetera. The only things that we noted that were adequate or excellent were the technology and health and fitness.
Someone muted you. Press star six to unmute.
The next slide, Rob. The things that, when we're looking at program in the building and working with Principal Quitter, he and I talked at length about this, and how if we were to move ahead with the bond project as it was described, how would we make those changes and fits to that building? And one of the things we're looking at is flexibility of space. So the program is basically shoehorning innovative practices in the non-innovative areas. There's a constraint of the traditional model of school, which does not support the current teaching or the method of practice. And in here, we show a photo, the left photo is the hallway of New Vista. It's a traditional, down the hallway, office along the wall, classrooms off the side. The right side is a photo from Fairview High School of the innovation area we developed, which has doorways, ability to, flexible spaces within this space. With some of the structural issues that Rob described earlier, we're concerned that getting into trying to do some of these flexibilities spaces could be another challenge that we would have to explore.
Hey Scott, real quick, just please, everybody, make sure you're muted. We're getting a lot of feedback.
I think it's coming from Scott, actually, Rob. I'm not sure Scott, if you have headphones on or something, but we're getting a lot of feedback from your...
I do, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There you go. That's better, Scott.
Sorry about that.
Nope.
All right. So in the next slide, we talk about the performance and demonstration space, and this was something that Principal Quitter and I talked about. The New Vista program does a community-wide presentation, and this is a space, the current auditorium that they use quite often. We have several deficiencies in that space. In addition to poor lighting, acoustics, we've got a water problem coming in because the floor of the space sits below grade, and there's some issues outside of that. We've also had numerous failures on the HVAC side in there as well. So the, in general, in kind of a summary of the program deficiencies, you know, there's significant ADA issues like Rob described. We have extreme temperature ranges, as many of you are aware of, throughout this building. It's an old steam boiler system, and so control of that has become difficult over the years. There's a large building which is counterproductive to the community and connection that's trying to be created with this program. Outdoor learning spaces, while we have a wealth of outdoor space to utilize, other than the main courtyard in front of the building, there's not too many usable outdoor learning spaces. And then, like I said earlier, you know, we're trying to make innovative practices fit into what we consider non-innovative spaces. So in the next slide, this is a summary from our bond page of all of the items that were included in the original bond project. And you can see there's quite a bit. The majority of these things are deferred maintenance items, new roof, doors, windows, heating HVAC system, et cetera. There was a discussion of innovation, and as everyone knows, we've tried to incorporate innovation into every one of our facilities throughout the 2014 bond, and I think to pretty good success that. We can go to the next slide, Rob. So the other thing that we looked at was facility condition index, and in the original assessment in 2014, we had an estimated FCI of .46. And what the FCI is, just for a refresher, is the cost of repairs divided by the replacement cost of the facility, and that ratio then tells you what that index is. And at the time, we were looking at a total construction cost of about 9.6 million. Added that to our design costs and other soft costs, get us to a total project budget of about 13 million. So when we hired the third-party assessment, when we started seeing some of these other things, we dug into some of these other issues out there, and looking at what's happened in the five to six years since the original assessment was done, that maintenance has really shown itself, or the condition of the facility has really shown itself in how fast it's degrading, to where now our FCI is over 66%. And we're estimating, based on current inflation and construction rates, that the scope of work, the original scope of work we had identified in 2014 would be approximately $15 million in work. So you can see about a five and a half million increase in over a six-year period of that.
Scott, thank you. So Scott's talking about facility condition index, the lower the FCI, the better. So as we're thinking about this in particular, this graph right now is the life cycle cost analysis that I referred to earlier. So the yellow line, or I should say the orange line, shows the initial and the ongoing cost of ownership of the facility over time. So when we look at an initial investment, this is with construction costs, so that 15 million that Scott just referenced a little bit ago, we add on 30%. That 30% is for design costs, testing costs, permitting, contingency, et cetera. So that gets us up to about a $19.5 million number. That is the starting point. This does not address the structural issues I talked about. Those costs are not in this orange line, nor does this address any of the educational inadequacies that Scott addressed early on in his, in the presentation. So as we're moving up, you'll see that $20 million, we'll start addressing some of our systems right off the bat. We get to about year 10, we have to address, that's when we're assuming that six to 10 years is when we got a big bump in some replacement of systems there, and this is all outlined in the report from RD3. And then the ongoing maintenance and repair of the building continues. And you'll see at years 21, 22, we have this break-even point, and that's one of the reasons we're here today having this discussion. A new facility of like size, if you think about a 78,000-square-foot building, right now, construction costs and new construction are running around $400 a square foot. You add on our 30% for soft costs, and that'll bring you in right underneath $40 million. And as you can see with the maintenance and repairs, that's where that break-even point of 20 to 21 years is at currently. So this, again, has been adjusted over time. We've been looking at inflation. Just so you know, when we passed our bond in 2014, we assumed new construction costs at $230 a square foot. In today's market, like I said, new construction is going for around $400 a square foot. So as we're thinking about facilities, and again, another reason to bring you on board and have this discussion, is we run through a matrix to help make our decision. So, you know, as we're thinking about, do we renovate buildings? Do we replace buildings? Do we consolidate buildings? We walk ourselves through this. So as we're thinking about it, is the building facility condition index 60% or higher? And as Scott reported a little while ago, we were at 66%. So we move over, is the building 60 years old? This building is at 68 years old currently? So the answer to that is yes. Is utilization below 60%? Utilization for us is calculated as enrollment divided by the capacity of the building. And as we reported earlier, 328 students. Capacity of New Vista is currently at 611 students, so puts us at a utilization factor of around 51%. So the answer to that is yes. So it leads us to a decision of replace or consolidate. So again, another reason just to have this discussion, making sure that we're utilizing taxpayers' funds in a wise manner. The next steps, what is our recommendation moving forward, and what are the considerations we need to take into account? So community sentiment regarding the property. We've been having these discussions with our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. This is one of the things our committee members continue to bring up, is making sure we understand where the community is at with this project, and where they would be at if we decided to do something different in the master plan. A declining enrollment throughout Boulder Valley School District, that's something we've been facing. We've had those discussions, and we'll continue to have those discussions, and how this may impact the high school enrollment for the next five to 10 years. Cost per student, and then we have a large developable space, developable space in Boulder, land value, replacement costs. We have some opportunities with this property that allows to do some different things, potentially partnerships, et cetera, as we move forward.
Hey, Rob, one other consideration that I'd like to bring up for the board is time as well, right? Like, to the extent that when you go through these processes as a school district, you know, there's certain facility considerations, programmatic considerations, but there's also time considerations as well. And this was a project that was supposed to be a Phase One project, that there was some thoughts at the time among district leadership to maybe try something new and different, and so they paused that. And because of that, now, you know, New Vista should be in the upgraded facility per the bond, but because of that, they're now, four or five years later, in a place where, you know, the promises and where we were originally have come, you know, four or five years down the road. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows and understands that, that I think to the extent that we're weighing these options, I think time is certainly an important factor that we have to think through.
Excellent point, thank you. So staff recommendation, our recommendation is to establish a working group to discuss the following options, the options being promises made, promises kept. That would be is moving forward in the master plan within the budget of $13 million. Another option, and I don't believe we're limited to these options, these were three options, but expanding the scope to correct efficiencies and modernize the schools. That would be expanding the scope into a renovation scope, or move forward with new construction to replace the facility. And, you know, in one of these options, either options two or three, you could address critical needs immediately, to make sure we're addressing some of the needs over the next few years as we're looking at different financing mechanisms, et cetera. So the idea here is, we put a working group. The working group would be proposed as the following, so Principal Quitter would be part of that, System Principal, any representative teachers that he would like to include, Network Leadership, myself, Scott Stevens would be part of that, our Senior Planner, Glenn Segrew, Maintenance and Custodial Departments, Parents, Students, Neighborhood Representatives, and members of our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. The committee would be led by an architect. Architects do this, lead our design advisory teams on all of our projects, and we would follow the same process moving forward with New Vista.
And board members, just as we talk about proposing that this be facilitated by an architect, you know, Rob and I have had conversations around this on why we feel like that would be the right approach. You know, if we do have an architect lead this working group, they, Rob, can you go back to slide 23? That as you think about this middle option, you would need some type of architectural expertise to be able to begin to frame out what's potentially possible, right? To the extent that, in meeting with the New Vista staff and board members, I know that you know this, but I need the public to understand what a special place New Vista is. I've never met a faculty so committed to their original vision. There's so many members of Kirk's team out there that have been there since day one, they've built something incredibly special, and we have to honor kind of what their thoughts are. So as we think about this middle option, if we think about, you know, expanding the scope, having somebody who can start to bring some of those ideas and thoughts to life in a way that's feasible, right? Because as Rob and I have talked, and I've seen this happen in other places, if you get the wrong, you get the wrong facilitator, somebody who doesn't have the expertise on what it would cost, the dollars and cents, you can get people really bought in and excited on a vision that you can't afford to deliver on, right? So I think that as Rob and I have talked, having somebody with that experience in facilitation and that has done this well, I think is critically important. So sorry to keep interjecting, Rob, but I just wanted to make that point.
No, yes. So timeline overview, and I, you know, right in the middle of a pandemic, when everything seems to be closing down around us, I feel like this is an aggressive timeline, but still an achievable timeline. So where we are at tonight, work session on November 17th, we would kick off our group meeting mid-December. We would have two meetings in January, and then a working group would report to the board in February, end of February. And then in March, we would start developing next steps based on the guidance that the board provides to the staff. So, and that would be based, now, I do want to make it clear that based on this timeline, I would not expect to be bringing back renderings or design documents. I mean, this would be an idea to bring back a renovation scope, what we would call a conceptual level design with some narrative behind it on what we would attempt to do, maybe with some financing options of how we could proceed with any of these scenarios that we would bring forward to the Board of Education. So with that, I will open it up to questions.
Okay, thank you so much. So what we're talking about is a proposed work plan to address the New Vista issue. What questions do we have, Stacy?
I don't really have any questions, just a comment. Thank you for that, Rob, and everybody. And I'm in favor of hearing what this working group can come up with, because it is such a special place, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I know that our enrollment is declining, but I would venture to say that the enrollment at New Vista will not decline. I see that as a place of growth, even if our high school population is declining. So I'm in favor of all of this, and look forward to hear what you come up with.
Okay, and just a heads up, I cannot see all the board members right now, so I'm going to go alphabetically. Richard, do you have any questions or comments?
I want to thank Rob and Scott for the presentation they just made. Dr. Anderson mentioned time, I think, is really critical to consider, because, and history also, I think is critical to consider, because if you look at the history of New Vista, my daughter, I think, was one of the first-generation graduates of New Vista. And I recall that when New Vista was proposed and developed, they ended up at a primary building. They were at the University Hill Primary Building, you know, that was designed for preschool. So they had to do renovations on that particular building, and then they... And then they ended up at Paddock Elementary School. So it's always been historically, it's always, for me, anyway, it's always been treated like a second cousin to the other buildings and the other schools in our district. And I do believe that I think we need to think about history and time and, and really get thinking creatively to see if we can't make this, this happen. I really believe firmly that New Vista deserves a new building. And, and there's plenty of land there and there's plenty of other creative ideas that we might be able to do to maybe think about financing this project. But, and the other question I had is, because we talked about bond, if everything turns out to be a new building and we got to go after a bond, how early could we do that? Or is that too premature right now?
You know, Richard, I think it's too premature right now. I think we need to have further discussions about what our needs are long-term, what are our goals in the district, et cetera. So I think it's just too premature to have that discussion right now.
Hey Kathy?
Thanks, Richard. I, I, hold on, I'm getting this weird, there we go. I'm with Stacy. I think that this is a plan. I don't think it's too aggressive when we figure that we, they were in phase one and we haven't done anything for them. I was a little taken aback by the figure of six point something in deferred maintenance just over the last five years. So we totally just walked away from the building. And how did we let that much deferred maintenance come up just over such a short period of time?
Kathy, I think what you're, what we're starting to see is, is the system that were originally estimated back in 2012 and 2013 that were supposed to be replaced in 2015, 2016 timeframe. Over time, we're just starting to see that deferred maintenance build up. And that's what we see across the board when you don't address deferred maintenance immediately. It just starts capitalizing on itself. So it's, it's the systems that we currently had structured to be replaced that are in the bond that are just adding up over time.
Well, what I would like to, Richard, to you, I am not interested in waiting for a new bond to fix New Vista. So I would like us to put our heads together and come up with some financing alternatives for, and some creative ideas. One of the ideas is what one of our neighbors did, which is we could do some COP financing and roll that into a bond. So I would really like to see us be creative on both sides, not just with the architect, but also trying to figure out what we can do to get this building up to something that we can be proud of in Boulder, because right now I don't think it's a building that any of us could be proud of in the Boulder Valley School District. So I'm excited about the plan of a working group and thank you for, for bringing that forward. Kitty asks certificates of participation, Kitty. They're just an alternate financing mechanism that when we hear back, I think in a couple of months, we can have some alternatives and some ideas to look at for financing. But I don't think we're married to either, what, what I want to make sure, this is my position, just because that was the scope that we put in the original bond, we have exceeded the scope and probably, correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, but probably more buildings than not. So we would have not been limited in any way, shape or form by what the original scope was. And we find ourselves at the end of the rope, having spent a lot of money expanding scope and other projects and not being able to do anything for New Vista. So I don't want to make it seem like all we promised was this, when I think we just, because of time and circumstances, ended up where we are. And I'd also like to see us try to, I know this is a pandemic and everybody's got a million things on their plate, but I would love to see us reach out to CU again to see if there's any kind of partnerships that we could have to help make this go forward because I think it's in such a prime location. And I know we rolled this in with Uni Hill. I feel like it got, when Uni Hill fell apart, this fell apart and we never resuscitated this. And so I'm glad we're resuscitating it at least now. So I'm excited to, to see where this goes and I'm, and I really, really want to move on this as quickly as we can. So thanks.
Can I interject? Most people weren't around when we were talking to University of Colorado. Can you kind of explain where we left off and why?
Yeah, you know, originally we were talking about selling the University Hill Elementary, both the intermediate building and the primary building to the university, taking those proceeds, investing them with the proceeds that we had for New Vista and rebuilding one campus. One, we knew, once we started really looking into it and diving into the numbers, we didn't have enough money to make that happen. The value of University Hill was not enough. And two, we got a lot of community feedback, you know, on the University Hill, encroaching on the Hill residence area specifically, and then us selling University Hill. There's a lot of passion, a lot of love for the historic building that we have in this district. So, you know, a lot of community sentiment and then just concerns with the overall cost of the project, we didn't have enough in the budget to cover new construction for both University Hill and New Vista.
Thank you. Donna?
Rob, wasn't there also some kind of an agreement? I remember way back when that, that we might coordinate with CU on, on some kind of sharing of the, the New Vista building.
You know, we've had some initial discussions with some staff over there. I don't believe they're, they're any longer, but yes, about, you know, different partnerships that we could explore with New Vista. As Kathy mentioned, I completely agree, New Vista is in the, in the right location. I mean, we got a perfect opportunity to partner with the university. The university, in my understanding, used to have needs after school hours. We've got needs during school hours. So how can we partner and make sure we're, you know, using our facilities all day long and at night? And so to me, there's tremendous amount of opportunity there, but I agree with Kathy on this, we need to explore that further as we're moving forward.
Okay. I, I don't really have any questions, just a lot of thoughts that concur with everyone else as far as, yes, that building, you know, I've been in and out of it, working with teachers in that building for years. And I know that it's, it, it needs, it needs it and we've put it off long enough. I hate to see waiting much longer because as you pointed out, the cost per square foot has almost doubled, if I heard that correct. And I, I don't see that going down, only up. So that's why I, I would like to see something happen sooner.
Thank you, Donna.
Okay, Kitty?
Yes, Rob, I had a question about that decision-making matrix. So we ended up at replace or consolidate. So can you explain exactly what is meant by consolidate?
Well, what you have to look at, and I think these are the challenging discussions we have as a district at times, is when we've got a building that is underutilized, so this building is at 51% utilization, for example. You know, I believe we look at our other, we should look at our other facilities and say, could we, or do we have room in our other facilities for a population of 300-plus students? Now, as a district, in all of our high schools, you might say, hey, yeah, we could absorb the 300 students in our other high schools. But none of our high schools have capacity for 300 students, nor will they in the next five to 10 years. So I think that's the discussion we really need to have is, is what I have heard loud and clear from the board, from Dr. Anderson, from various superintendents, this is a great program. So they need their own facility. So we can't just absorb the 300 students at other facilities. We're going to stick with this. So how can we make this facility work or look at other options?
That's what I thought, to be sure. So I pretty much agree with everything that's been said. I think we absolutely have to do as much as we can now to keep the building from falling apart and to give New Vista, you know, something. It's a wonderful program, but I would ultimately like to see a brand-new building for New Vista. That's just what makes sense to me. And, you know, they deserve a decent place to learn. That's all I have.
Lisa? Okay, Lisa?
Uh, yeah, I think sort of in line with what we're hearing from everyone else. New Vista is such an excellent program and they really deserve a facility that matches that excellence. I think Stacy is right and I, and I think we've talked before about the idea that enrollment is, is very likely to grow there, especially with the building that matches the needs of the students. So I'd love to see us get to that new building and to do it as quickly as possible.
Okay. So Stacy, you went first, right? Okay. Yeah, I'll share some thoughts. I, I think that this board is going to have to talk about the realities of enrollment in the city of Boulder. So we have some really serious decisions we're going to make. It may not be by the end of my term, but we know that we have a lot of buildings that are very low utilization to go to the elementary level. So I hope that we consider and have the courage to address that, understanding that every single building has a history, is important to the community. We'll have huge community pushback if you were around for the closure of Mapleton and Washington. It's a total nightmare. It's terrible for a board to go through. But this is a reality that we need to talk about and think about because it's not looking like enrollment's going to grow in the city of Boulder. When you look at the enrollment of New Vista, I think there are 150 kids from Boulder, the city of Boulder, from Fairview and Boulder High. And there are about 40 each from Centaurus and Monarch and there are about 52 from out of district. I do like the location of New Vista because there's access to those other schools with public transportation. It's really important. But we do probably need to be realistic about whether it's going to grow. It might grow and it might not. We haven't seen growth, significant growth over the last four years. I think a new building will do it. Just remember that when we're at 50% utilization, any other school can come and open there by Colorado law. I'm not sure if everyone's aware of this, but we already had a school wanting to open in New Vista. So I hope that this group thinks hard about what our capacity is going to be at this school, given the realities of what's happening in our community, the lack of housing for families is, it, it doesn't look like it's going to happen, any more housing for families. So I, I think we have to be, I would love a brand-new building, but we have to be really realistic about where we are fiscally and where we are with just our population. So, you know, so I, I hope that this group is willing to have some hard conversations about where we are. We're in a tough spot.
So if we were to buy, build a new building, would we be thinking about building something smaller, you know, that still has what they need, but that the capacity is not as big as the current building?
Kitty, I think that would be a decision point that we would have to work with in the design advisory team, right? Do we build this building for 350 students or 400 students or 600 students, right? I, you know, I don't know the answer to that question. I think that's something we would have to work through with members of a design team, with, like I said, our senior planner, with the board of what are we trying to achieve in New Vista? And what is the right size of New Vista? And that's a question that Kirk and his staff would have to answer, is would we want that school to get much bigger or is 350 the right number for the current program?
Well, it seems like it does, it doesn't, it's to me, to build a new building that's also much bigger and ends up at 50% or 51% capacity.
Right.
There's somebody else wanting to move in.
Richard?
Yeah, I just have a comment concerning consolidation and I know that we're in tough times and, and there are some buildings that are being underused and all of that. But I recall when Washington, Squidling of Washington shut down and they consolidated with University Hill, that it created big time issues at, when those two merged together, mostly around the critical approach to teaching. And, and I know that New Vista has a very unique approach. So I just want to caution us when we start thinking about that, that we think about some of those other things before we do any type of consolidation.
And I think, Richard, I wasn't so much suggesting consolidation as we're probably going to have to decide sometime soon whether we should be maintaining all 57 of our schools. And, and the other point I wanted is, I'm, I would, and I saw that, I think Ginger is going to be on the working group from Centaurus, is that correct?
No, I did not have Ginger on the working group, no.
Oh, sorry, Kitty.
Yeah, LMS.
Oh, Kitty, yes, yes.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to point out again that almost all of our choice schools are in the city of Boulder and most of our growth is in East County. So I just hope the working advisory group can address that issue so that, just so that we feel that there's equity across our county, our, our district. Kathy?
So as part of what you're going to put together, Rob, is a timeline for when we would have to spend the money right now? And I mean, we wouldn't be doing anything this summer anyway, is that right? We don't have contracts out, we don't have any, we don't have plans. So what is the timeline for, what's the quickest we could, let's say the working group comes up with a plan we all like. What's the quickest that we could figure out how to go forward?
I think that's something we would bring back to the committee. I would say, Kathy, that if we bring back an option that is, let's meet the critical needs immediately and then come up with a plan, you know, if that's either renovate or replace, you know, I have a lot of faith in Scott that he could put something in place to address some critical needs this coming summer. Just so everybody is aware, one of our biggest challenges, I do not hear from Kirk or his staff until we hit about August 15th. And from August 15th to September 15th, that is one of the hottest buildings in the school. And I'll tell you, his staff is wonderful, but you can only take so much when it's 85 degrees in your classroom. So I would like to figure out a we, a way to support Kirk and his team this coming school year. So what that means is, is we're going to have to look at some new electrical switch gear so we can get some portable air conditioning units in those classrooms. So that is a critical need that I've identified, knowing that we will not have something in place this coming summer. So, you know, there's a few other things from an ADA perspective that I would like to address. They've been highlighted from a current student at New Vista that I would like to address immediately. And then Scott has some other items that he's identified. So, but Kathy, if you don't mind, we will put a timeline together as we're working through. I mean, a lot of that is going to be based on the different financing mechanisms we're looking at and then the different options, right? A new facility, you might be looking at nine months to a year in design. And then potentially, if you're building a 68,000 square foot, you're probably looking at 14 months of construction. Innovation might be able to happen a little bit quicker than that. So I think it's depending on which options we bring forward, we would put a timeline with each one of those options.
Well, and then whatever money we're making now isn't, isn't the money we end up not being able to utilize going forward because we need to make sure every penny we put in now takes us closer to where we want to end up.
Yeah. You know, with the electrical switch gear, as Scott has pointed out to me, it's possible to reutilize that switch gear in a new building or in a renovated building. So I think we're going to be strategic about what we do to make sure we can reuse with whatever plan we move forward with.
Okay. I, I just, that's part of the timeline. Thanks, Rob.
Yep. I want to, just real quick, if you don't mind, I want to address a comment, Tina, that you made about utilization is, is when we're thinking about enrollment and capacity, et cetera, you know, we figure out, you know, there's, in a high school, for example, Glenn has a formula that might say there's 29 students per classroom. And that's how we determine our utilization of our buildings. Well, New Vista's instructional, your program out there is different than a traditional high school program. So if you go into New Vista today, you might see 14 students, take the pandemic out of this equation. On a normal day, a normal school year, you might see 12 to 14 students, but that's how he runs his program. However, it drives his utilization down. It does not change our decision-making. Either it still takes us to replace or replace or consolidate. So I just want to make sure that is aware when we say, you know, a charter could actually come in and use that. Kirk is using every space. We just don't have the same number of students in every space that we would see in a traditional high school.
And, and I think we talked about this, about how our utilization rates that we post publicly per Colorado statute need to somehow address what's really happening.
Right.
Because we, this is what we ran into.
Yep.
I have a quick question for Glenn Segru, does, and Rob, if I may, if we're expecting an enrollment increase in Boulder anytime soon? He watches this.
I wouldn't, you know, nothing that you can really bank on. I mean, watching stuff closely, but there's no, you know, there's no indication that we're going to see a big ground swell. I'm hoping more at this point that we're kind of bottoming out in terms of first rate and. and, um, and, or, or at least elementary and kindergarten levels. Um, so going, take going from that to actually growing again is, is a big leap, I think, at this time.
Maybe depending on how to increase that birth rate.
Donna, I hate to break it to you, they're thinking we're going to be five million babies short or something like, they say it's the biggest non-birth event.
Oh, no, I heard that, you know, baby boomers, I thought it might be pandemic boomers.
No, I think it's going to get pandemic decline.
Yeah, one thing I can say about that is, um, I know the statemographer has talked a lot about that recessions tend to cause dips in birth. So people will tend to hold off having births until they're financially sound. So, uh, they've expected another dip out of the COVID-related recession.
I had a grandson born right at the beginning, so, but.
Go, go get some more grandchildren, Donna, for our schools.
I'll, I'll work on it. I, I've decided not to have any more children.
Okay. Um, another question I had is, because this is a relatively small program, is it possible we can house them in another building to accelerate construction? Whether it's a Rappahoe or something like that? Because sometimes we have people living in one wing and then in another wing and it slows things down.
Tina, we have spent a lot of time thinking about that as we're thinking about what the total cost of construction would be. And, you know, Scott and I have been brainstorming ideas, you know, do you build a modular farm out there? Or do you build a building in a different location on the site? Allow them to stay in their current facility while we're under construction in the, in the new facility, for example. So, uh, but to answer your question, we do not believe we have capacity in any of our buildings for pre-graduates.
Do you lean, do you lean more modular versus another building if there are?
Donna, it's really, we're going to have to get a civil engineer engaged and, and try to really place the building where we need to have it on, you know, take those discussions off and just say, where would you place this facility on the current site? And, you know, down below, if you think about to the east, uh, we've got a lot of room to the east of that building and that was Scott's, a civil engineer by trade. Um, and that was some of his ideas, build a building there and then you scoot the parking lot closer to Twentieth Street, for example. Uh, but we do have a significant grade, uh, from the west to the east and that's some of our drainage issues that we've had over there. So how would we capture that and then working with, uh, stormwater, et cetera? So designers will work through that with us and, uh, try to make the best decisions we can.
You could put it on.
All right, any other, any other questions or comments? Okay, so it seems like we're going to look forward to the, um, outcomes that the working advisory group comes up with. And hopefully we'll have a nice timeline for some significant changes at New Vista to support the program. Is that a good recap?
Sounds like a good recap.
All right, well, thank you guys so much, oh, sorry, thank you team so much for all of your work and help. All right.
Have a good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, everyone.